We'll call the planning commission and city council meeting for July twenty fourth, uh, we'll come forward at five thirty three P M. Stand for the I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. In this law. Roll call. All right, uh, councilperson McCamery.
Here.
Councilperson McCallister. Councilperson Keith Phelps.
Yeah.
Councilperson Datlin.
There.
Councilperson Isaacson.
Here.
And, uh, councilperson Supple.
Here.
Councilperson Shaver. Councilperson Nurse.
Here.
By commission, Commissioner, uh, Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner, uh, Elizabeth Don.
Yeah.
Commissioner Preston here. Uh, Commissioner Chris Wallen.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard. And Commissioner Chapel.
He has an excuse absence, by the way, I'm proposing that.
Okay. So, I didn't, it's kind of review, and it's like, well. The people need to, oh, my group, uh, do we have the motion to, uh, present tonight's agenda? Second.
Second.
Call favor. Those paid, opposed? All right, motion passed.
Any other council member question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, if, did you say council membership for, said he wasn't going to be here? Oh, he did say he would not be here. He has an engagement that he forgot about. So I got a meeting three times on my calendar for tonight, and so I was just worried. No, he's driving now. Yeah, okay, thank you.
City, 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 thank you.
Uh, I will, we'll go really quick through those. Uh, Naomi is not here this evening. She's feeling under the weather, so I'll be doing the capital facilities plan presentation. And our city engineer, Laura St. Grindel, is also here, so then I will tag team when we, when needed. But it also means that we'll take the last item off of the agenda because she has access to the exercises that we did at the last city council meeting, which is the visioning work. So we'll just do that at our next meeting. And that's it. We're going to try and get you out of here within ninety minutes so that you can go down and enjoy the music if that's what you'd like to do. Thank you.
There any comments? So, we're going to follow. Excellent. There is, well, we went to the presentations, the capital facilities plan. And.
Yeah. So, uh, I have my process. Be my screen. So, the evening, uh, counseling, planning commission tonight is the rollout and first discussion of the capital, capital facilities plan, which will then lead into our capital facilities element work. So it's similar to the transportation plan and then goes into the transportation element and the parks plan update, but then goes into the parks element. So a lot of work this year, and so we're going to go ahead and get started. So we're going to talk about two pieces tonight. What is a capital facilities plan? And also talk about the six-year capital improvement program. What does that mean and what does that look like? Excellent. Uh, the capital facilities plan. So what is it? We've talked about this a couple of times, but it's been a while. This is what addresses the future infrastructure needs of our community. It includes transportation, parks, water, sewer storm, and our governance facilities or our buildings. It's a comprehensive coverage, so it outlines things like acquisition, expansion, rehabilitation to all of our infrastructure. It also details timelines, costs, financing, and the actual C I P program. We're going to scoot in a little bit, but it also seeks multi-jurisdictional coordination, so that's with agency, county, state. Um, it includes our partnerships, grants, and our funding supports for projects. So most plans and even elements start off, but our cap, our content starts off with an executive summary. And so do all of our other planning documents. And in general, they'll have an overview, decision-making, efficiency, engagement, clarity, and accessibility. This one's a little more specific. The capital facilities plan, each plan has a, kind of a different strategy that gets summarized in the executive summary. So the overview provides a concise summary, the main points of the larger document or report. And it allows the readers to quickly understand the essential information without reading the entire document. Because honestly, our community is probably only going to look at the pictures and probably look at the executive summary because they're always so wrong. And so we want it to be pretty clear and concise in that summary. Uh, we also look at decision-making as a summary as well because it highlights the most critical aspects of the finding. It helps administration, our stakeholders, but most importantly, our decision-makers. It helps them grasp the key messages and makes, helps them make a more informed decision, makes us do that. Uh, we also look at the, we're not that efficiency. And that is, it saves times by distilling the larger capital facilities plan into one chapter. And this is really, again, because everybody's busy. I mean, I think we even have, you know, sometimes we'll even have like planning commissioner counselors that will focus in on the summary first. And then they'll be like, okay, where do I want to go dig in? Because not everybody wants to dig in. Everybody has something that they're passionate about. We also look at efficiency and when it, and when you do kind of distill it down and you put it in the summary, it saves time kind of just for the general community. But even our partners, like say somebody that can kind of want to go in and look at something or the tribe did it or one of, um, like our board partners as well. They can go in and see things more quickly that way. We also look at engagement. It captures, does it capture your attention, right? Because that's the most important piece within that. Uh, accessibility and clarity, it organizes and presents information logically and succinctly. We try to use similar patterns that you would see regionally as well and what makes them those sense kind of brain-wise looking through it. Uh, accessibility is, again, not everybody has the time and some people don't have the technical expertise. So you try to really make it simplified. Okay, so everybody, hopefully, everybody knows, we were established in nineteen thirteen of the city of Duval. Um, and we're municipal government, so we operate that way and we provide essential services to the community, which includes infrastructure, which are your capital facilities. But really, why are we here? Because we're required to. I know the growth management, like we can talk about that one all night long if you want. Um, but it does require us to manage growth and plan for growth within our facilities. Uh, it is really a guidance document for our officials. It guides us into making informed decisions and hopefully good informed decisions. And it also provides you the opportunity to look at how you want to budget in the two-year period or the five-year period, or even looking out even further than that. It is used most often as a planning tool, but let's not forget about that it's also a living document and it's an adaptable and an amenable document. So we look at it, we should be looking at it regularly to update and make changes. So the C F P does not, is not a guarantee for funding of C I P projects. Um, we do the best we can. It's a planning tool to evaluate resources across in the community. And we work really hard to have a six-year C I P that we can actually accomplish. That's our goal at the end of the day. And we aim to identify the necessary improvements, guide the budget decisions, and consider potential acquisitions or divestitures. For any of those that doesn't know what divestiture, it's a large government word. That means like potentially, um, selling off resources or doing other things where you're like doing a consolidation, something like that. It's not the normal, but it is done. Um, reviewed by annually, which is budget, right? Focusing on inventory management and cost analysis. It also is set to incorporate city council priorities and long-range objectives to remain responsive and efficient and adaptable all at the same time. Again, it's a living document and that means that we are constantly changing to our community needs, our project costs, timing available resources, or even emergency, quite honestly, if that would happen. It is intended to guide future funding decisions evolving over time. And it's never always easy. You know, we don't always get it right with what projects we need because we can grow slower, we can grow faster, or a new mandate can come out where we have to do something. Okay. To the next slide, please. So now we're going to talk about the general sta- strategy. Uh, that provides direction, again, guides decision-making, aligns efforts, facilitates planning, enhances adaptability. Every plan should be adaptable. Um, and it communicates the vision and supports accountability. By outlining the overall approach and vision for achieving specific goals, it sets a clear path for actions to align to long-term objectives. Which I think this council, the Indian councils previously are trying to do that more and more as we go into the future. When G M A was first there and we all had to do capital facilities planning, C I P work, it was a bit of a missing target in the first couple of iterations of growth management. And so now we're what, four, almost four comp plans in since G M A. And so we're getting better and better at it. Again, it gives the guide's decision-making, which is the help with the priorities and the framework. I feel like I'm saying things over and over, by the way. So I'm sorry. I did practice this, by the way. Um, facilitates planning, which means it aids in the development of detailed plans and policies to implement the strategy. Um, enhances the adaptability by, uh, adjustments and updates as circumstances change. It communicates the vision and it supports accountability because it really is an accountability matrix as well, right? Because every year we can look at the C I P, bring it to council, and be like, okay, we got this done, we're in the first phase of this project. So I think it's really important, that piece is really important. Excellent. Uh, we do, as part of the general strategy, we look at the comprehensive inventory. Um, we did some of that work as part of the A R C work for those that are on council. For planning commission, we haven't really talked about the A R C work and maybe we'll actually bring a summary of that work, um, as well. Uh, the policy formulation, that is a lot about your goals and policies, which are based on community vision and then implementation of your vision, but also it was also implementing your growth strategy as well. Uh, your funding strategies, we have to always develop a financing policy to support the annual requirements of city facilities. And we have to incorporate the citywide goals and departmental needs as well into this plan and the general strategy. And we need to also consider an asset reserve policy to address community employee needs and mitigate disruptions from property damage. We'll actually be talking a little bit more about some more future work that we need to be doing as well as part of this. Uh, next one. Thank you. So what are the overreaching goals? Those, that is to establish a current inventory. Um, and that is for all of our buildings and properties. We also look at maintenance, repair, and replacing existing infrastructure, the investment in new infrastructure, and correct efficiencies to ensure the city's health and long-term stability in terms of quality of the life and economic vitality. So kind of one thing that I would say economic vitality, I'm going to go off script a little bit, and this is so boring, is think about the investment in Main Street and all the phases that we've done. Look at the investment we're making now, whether it was the water project we did for the toll, right? Or Third Avenue, that whole work that we're replacing now, or even just our, our caving program as well, just the little things and all the sidewalk changes that we're making and A D A stuff. I mean, it's a lot. We could go on forever. Um, we also talk about the commitment to regular updates in the plan so that you're holding us accountable to making those changes and those updates and bringing them back through the legislative process. We also talk about as a general strategy, the effective management of our capital facilities. And that's by the appearance of maintenance operations and future capital improvement projects. And then looking at when we have a deficiency or something that needs to be repaired or replaced. We also, as a management tool, need to work towards optimization of resource allocation. And so, you know, Duval has honestly been, I think, a pretty good optimization of resources. You know, whether it is, you know, getting grants, partnerships, um, using like REIT dollars, like just being as efficient as we can with them, with the resources that we have. Um, we also want to ensure the continued functionality and value of its assets. Um, are the community benefit. Uh, Duval manages various capital assets, including the public facility, streets, parks, trail, water system, sanitary sewers, and stormwater. It's a lot. Not all cities have the amount of infrastructure that we do. When you look at us, we're still a pretty small city. And so we don't have the same economies of scale that some larger cities do. I think sometimes people are surprised that we have our own sewer, our own sewer system. And sometimes even like our own parks department or our own police department, um, we're, we're really lucky as a small city. Um, through our C I Ps, the city ensures the asset meets the community's evolving needs and the, and demonstrating a commitment to the maintenance and functionality. I would say that when you, you know, when you go out to the community, a lot of times they want more than what you can afford, right? And so you have to have those really difficult conversations as well because a want isn't necessarily a need or a requirement. So sometimes you have to look at those prioritizations as well. Yay, levels of service, one of my favorite topics. I've always thought levels of service, I can get such an important piece of global, but. So when we look at level of service, you know, we have, you know, A through F, so performance measurement, resource allocation, planning developments. It's all the same things that we keep talking about every slide, but it looks a little bit different because in a lot of areas, you'll have general level of service standards. Sometimes you'll have mandated level services standards. And so those are the things that we look at and we look at establishing benchmarks for quality and efficiency of services provided. And that helps us assess also how well are we meeting the community needs as well. So kind of benchmarking and checking in on a regular basis. Uh, the resource allocation, when we look at level certainly is, uh, spending our resources to ensure services are met and that they meet that standard, whatever that standard is that we choose. And you can choose different levels of service, you can, based on the resources that you have. And that's really what you have to do, by the way, because you don't have more resources. So you have to fit it into what your resources are. Uh, planning and development, this is this in planning infrastructure and services to accommodate future, um, current and future. So we do a lot of that. I mean, that partly what the transportation plan is too, as we look at level services of our road gap work, right? And that's often how we look at what improvements do we need to do within the community along our corridors. Decision-making, obviously, and always it informs policy and C I Ps, but also is about operational decisions and identifying service gaps and areas of improvement. And it helps set realistic, realistic and achievable deliveries of service. Public satisfaction is really important and enhancing public confidence by demonstrating a commitment to maintaining a high service standard and addressing any community services. Public satisfaction is often one of the most important things, right, in government in general? But just always remember, you're always talking about satisfaction doesn't always align with the wants. So always providing that communication and that strategy for communication.
All right.
Yeah. Yes, you can, like, totally stop me.
Now, this is sort of just a reminder to me, you know, for me, when we talk about level of service, there's a future focus, sort of a present day, future focus in terms of infrastructure needs that we plan for. Um, you also mentioned sort of the expectation gap between the community wants and needs, but also bringing together or communicating the future maintenance needs versus sort of the, the present day infrastructure. You build it, but then you've got to maintain that. And there's a lot of variables that go into that from city staffing. You know, COVID staff was reduced. We saw the same park infrastructure that had to be maintained or, you know, we have park projects that are maintained for a certain period of time by the H O A and then they're handed over, uh, to the city and then the city takes on maintenance. This is, again, just a reminder for me, are all those aspects taken into account in this? Because there's, there's both a financial, which I guess even the staffing translates into a financial need, but also just the degradation or ongoing maintenance or upgrades as well.
Operations, maintenance, and replacement. And Laura, so you can interject at any time. Do you want to say anything before I?
Sure. Um, so the level of service that the G M A requires us to provide as a jurisdiction, as a municipality, is, is really just a, it's a standard. We're required to provide fire service, police, um, water, sewer. And so that's the type of level of service that this is really talking about. But in our other planning documents that go deeper into our infrastructure, we absolutely do take those things into account when we're looking at projects and operations and the ends of, you know, expanded infrastructure and things like that. So.
Yeah, park wasn't a good example. It could have been police cruisers or, or, you know, updates to the police station. I mean, both sort of future. And, and I think my assumption was, it was in there, but again, just a reminder, we haven't done this for a little while in terms of covering both ends of the spectrum.
Yeah, it's like one just because that is a mandated service versus parks are, are technically optional. It's what level of service. And some cities do, you know, one for five hundred or one for a thousand. And then you start to have economies of scale and then you don't necessarily have an officer, you know, one for five hundred. It, you know, it kind of tears out from there. Um, but I think, you know, I always see one of our greatest challenges is level of service and operations because people are your most expensive asset to the city, right? Every year is a budget. And so making sure that we have the right resources, people-wise as well, and that's actually a little bit later in the presentation as well. And I think we struggle often on with that, you know, because economy can challenge us, a pandemic can challenge us, and there's, you know, there's natural disasters that can challenge us potentially as well.
One, one follow-up story, not to monopolize this, but as we go into bioannual planning, but that's not something that I necessarily recall us doing when we did the bioannual planning. Reflecting back, I think staff would have, you know, interjected, but, but thinking about the level of service standards as we get our budget going forward. We typically talked about it at a more of a macro level than that micro level, but this is for me a sort of good reminder to tie that to the.
Yeah, every year, every year, each department is asked to budget for what the need is. And then it goes through a sausage-making exercise because sometimes we do struggle even with our, our needs. Little, little, far more. So there are times where we have to like pull back a little bit. And sometimes that can stall a project potentially as well.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, compliance, that compliance is really just complying with the regulatory environment. And that's really the growth, the fundamental credibility management part. Um, and we try to do this the best we can through obviously our existing resources, but also through, you know, fund, through grants and funding and partnerships. Uh, continuous improvement, you know, capital facilities plan, you're constantly doing an ongoing evaluation. Even if we don't come to you like every, we're talking like every two years, public works department is looking at every aspect of their plan and their C I P regularly, quarterly, um, just to see where we're at. And when we get complacent, like that might be an issue of something broken that needs to be fixed. Sometimes not everything can be fixed right away. You might have to budget for if it's a large, you know, a large item. So now we're getting to the fun part. So the proposed, uh, capital facilities plan. So this is really our six-year capital improvement program in a little bit longer version than what would be in your capital facility element, which is basically a summary. So again, G M A requires us to do capital facilities planning, which is really your element. And we have to do at least a six-year plan that finance, finances the facilities. And we have to protect our funding capacity and clearly identify sources of public money for those purposes. That's right out of, of statute. Excellent. So the, this capital ceilings plan will be for twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. It contains, uh, all of our facilities, including park transportation and utility, along with our debt terms, because that's always important. Um, we look at our secured capital funding opportunities. We look at our non-unutility capital revenues and our utility capital revenues as we go through that approach for funding of our C F P. A percentage is funded by non-city resources and we always talk about those. Um, and that's grants, other agencies, mitigation fees. I haven't even talked about that with us, so mitigation fees and developer contributions as well. So this is just a snapshot, an example of a project list. Um, we have project list for government facilities, sewer, water, storm, parks, transportation. And so you can see this is a draft, um, for the government facility, six-year C I P. And if I run the, was this in the A R C document?
Yeah, and that A R C document will be an appendices to the plan.
Thank you, Larissa. So you, at least city council has seen these numbers, planning commission has not. It does show you the items that we need to look at. It does not necessarily prioritize them by order. I always say that. It's not prioritized. At the end of the day, city council prioritizes them through its budget process. And so you'll see, um, a city hall, a public facilities yard, um, operation and maintenance. And so you, you can see that it's, it's a pretty expensive endeavor over a six-year period. You're not always going to be able to build everything in that six-year period. And that, I think, is the hardest message to the community as well, but we're required to do that. And we really strive to get as far along the list as we can. Not to use parks as, you know, the Debbie Downer, but we had a plan and when we hit the recession, nothing happened for the most part for three or four years. Instead, then you reevaluate it, we, you relook at it, and likely you have to push that timeline out by whatever the equivalent of maybe a downturn we call, even something like that. So, uh, example of funding sources, though, I know that council knows what we do. It's, it's for planning commission. That's our real estate excise tax dollars. Those are dollars that we get every time a property sells within the city of Duval. And so right now, we're in a building, a residential building boom. And so we're, for example, we have a hundred and seventy-six houses actively under construction. Most of those will finish within a six-month period. So every month we get a REIT report from the county and we get a percentage of that sales. And that goes into REIT one and REIT two. It's, it's a really good way to help fund our facilities. Um, we've already talked about grants and then utility, capital funding, non-capital funding. Um, we've already talked about grants and then utility, capital funding, non capital funding. And obviously the general fund as well. One thing you'll see on this is that um, we're also going to come back with a policy. It'll be outside of the capital facilities plan. Uh, sorry, next screen. So thank you, Larissa. I'm really glad I could see you. Um, we're going to come back with a draft policy that talks about allocation of REIT dollars. And so I know that's something that when we were doing the ARC, there was a three council member um, committee. And that was discussed in that committee. We haven't drafted it yet, but it will be there. Um, hopefully, I'm not quite sure when Larissa and Steve and I talked, I thought, I'm like, oh, when did that happen? Did we already have it? And so we will be looking up at that. And then we also did a municipal financial plan right now. And so we'll see the results of that. Um, that's really the, and this was really kind of just to like run the waters because planning commission is not as. Um, familiar with capital facilities planning. In your packet, you have a draft capital facilities plan. So right now we can have a discussion about, one, anything that I've talked about, but we also have Larissa here as well. She's, well, she's drafted the line share of a capital facilities plan. Staff and administration have looked at it.
Um, I just wanted to go back to level of service and I, I kind of scrolled back up into the actual document. I don't see necessarily specifics of, you know, so many per um, population. But one thing that I've seen in the past, we've talked about level of service as we try to compare ourselves to other cities. And one thing that's very different about Dubal than potentially, like, let's look at North Bend. You might say, we have almost exactly the same population as North Bend.
Yeah.
Way more than double um, our sales tax. And is that because we didn't have enough zoning for businesses? Is it because um, you know, they're on a highway?
We had, exactly. That's why I wanted to say is that um. I think sometimes we get this expectation like we're, like going back to level of service. Should our city have the same number of police officers as North Bend? We have the same number of people. So if you do a level of service and you just say, well, on average, a city of our size should have so many police officers. Well, imagine how much more police force you would need in a city of North Bend. When you are right on I ninety truck town, you've got an outlet mall, you have hardships, you have all this other stuff. So a lot of the services the city provides is serving that commercial area. And um, you know, they have a lot of industry coming up in North Bend. Is it practical that that would come here? I mean, this whole, sometimes I think, you know, if you zone it, they will come. I don't think that's true. We are different than North Bend. Uh, and that's just one example. And, you know, sometimes we compare to other cities. Understand as we go through this exercise of level of service, like how large of a city population we need? How many police should we have? How much staff should we have? If we're sitting, if we're trying to use comparisons of cities that are nothing like us. Aside from maybe a similar population size, we're going to constantly being frustrated and thinking. You know, we should have all those things or why don't we have this or we need this? And it's just not um, reasonable to expect that. So I just, as we're doing this document and as we're talking about, you know, what we need as a city, like a city hall and um. You know, certain infrastructure staffing levels, level of service, um, I do want to keep. In in mind that reality matters and the reality of our city being somewhat of a better home community. I would love to have more industry and different things and, but I don't think if we zone it, they will come. I mean, we have areas where affordable housing can come in. We have areas um, where businesses can build. And we even have development agreements where part of the agreement to let them build a bunch of housing that they made millions and millions of dollars in. They were supposed to build um, uh, commercial properties and develop it so that we would have more sales tax revenue. They, they just don't want to do it. We are constantly being told, you know, that it's not um, financially viable or things like that. We are not ever going to be in a situation like in North Bend. We're not going to be anything like a Monroe. Or a Redmond. And I want to ask, do we even want to be? Do, I mean, yeah, they have more revenue, but is that what our residents want? So anyway, I may be going off a little bit on tangent, but I just want to keep that in mind as we look at level of service. And we build out the rest of this, of our expectations um, of what we need. I mean, there was a talk, a, a mention of how our residents sometimes want things and we just can't afford it. And so I just, I know this is an aspirational document. A lot of these planning documents are pretty aspirational. But I also want to balance that, the trying to have um. Understand the reality of our situation. And honestly, a lot of people don't find the reality of our situation, that we're not going to become like those other cities. They don't want that. We had to bring in more money, but hell, what loss? So anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you. And Larissa, one thing to change next?
Yeah, and I wanted to say that is a great point about level of service. So when I was doing, when I did the level of service or the sort of standard section for this. I went just basically to Root and School District because they have to do their own capital facility plan to get their level of service. Um, I went to the, the fire district to see what their level of service was and I couldn't really find it very easily. So I did put notes in here to find, because other jurisdictions give a response time. Like that is the level of service that they want to provide to the residents of the community is a response time um, for fire. And then also there are, there should be a level of service for PD.
We do not have one, so. Yeah, this is the number of officers from population, but I would say that that isn't always transferable depending on if, if they have a very large commercial for. They have to be served by that police.
And that's a very, very valid point. And so that's why the police protection in here just kind of encapsulates their mission statement. Because I would like, no, we just don't have an adopted level of service for our police department. So um, I just wanted to throw that out there. I did know that we should probably have something, but just don't know.
Yeah, I, I know that a lot of this is just kind of suffering, like, you know, but I just wanted to. Thank you. And this is a good discussion because as we planned before. We've not had a level of service for public safety. And that was because we struggled with, how do we look at it and how we, how do we define it? Because some do it by population, some do it by response time. There's different things. And what if you have a smaller, tighter jurisdiction, you can get in easier? Or what if you have a larger one, right? Or what if you have a highway or a road that's really restricted? Or what if your facility is not in the right place where you're like more centralized so that you can be in spoken wheel system? So there's so many things to look at. And I think as our city grows, not necessarily grows like population or job. But just as we grow and mature, we really do need to tackle some of these things. Because that's just what we should be doing. We're getting kind of to that time in our life, uh, our community. And so there are some things that we just don't have a level of service for. And even like say parks, can parks, the ones, and police are the ones that I'm most familiar with. And even for parks, even though there are like industry standards, like it's a localized context too, right? And so pickleball's the rage now. Sorry, everybody, but in ten years, everybody might be asking us to do something else on those pickleball courts, right? So you don't want to create a level of service for pickleball courts, right? So you, it's just like, it's figuring out what the community needs are. And what the resources are that we have. Because, you know, and Councilor Maplin said it actually very well, like we aren't going to zone our way into this either. Do we have jobs that we're supposed to accommodate by, you know, PSRC in the county? Yes, at affordable housing units, yes. You know, we'll have a lot of discussions not to go into housing. But, you know, you think you're zoning something for R twenty, you're going to have affordable housing and you don't. You only have a diversity of housing, single family, attached family, tall, you know, three, you know, three stacked units. Um, does not equate to affordable. We'll have to talk more about that because we have to be careful of the terms that we use. Because not only are we looking at affordable housing, but we're also looking at low income housing, which is a whole nother definition. Versus a diversity of housing. And I think planners, that's us over here. Have always through just generational planning, have used affordable housing as a term. When it's not necessarily the right term for us to use. And I want to make sure that we're changing those conversations as we move forward. Um, because we don't have necessarily control of affordability of homes in most cases. And zoning up or down doesn't mean it's less expensive. So there are some learning lessons for, for planning in general. I would say that PSRC is stating to learn those learning lessons as well, but you just can't. Everything really has to be on local context and that includes your level of service. Because it goes into, we're not Monroe, we're not North Bend. They're very different. They have like highways going through it. They have, they're in some cases more spread out and they might be bisected by a train and also highways, right? And so a city like Monroe may have to have like a fire facility, you know, on both sides of the highway slash train tracks. And a police facility, right? Because those are public safety things. We're really lucky that we don't have to deal with some of the things that they have to deal with. Or even North Bend, because they have a lot of, you know, drive through traffic. And when you look, I've been able to go to their public safety, some of the public safety meetings. Where all of the police chiefs present out, you know, on a yearly basis. And listening to North Bend's quality, I'm always thankful that we're here in Dubal. Because it is a highway of crime as well. And they pick up a lot of people on that highway. And so I think we're, we're pretty lucky in that sense.
You could call it the internal external because in the same way, Jennifer said, you know, we're never going to be these kinds of factors. There's also the external influences, the Monroe, the carnations, the, the around, particularly around the transportation level service. Where we're impacted by the external, but we also have very little control about driving the infrastructure. So I think it works both ways.
Yeah. Are there any more thoughts or questions on capital facilities planning? Anything that you saw in any of the documents you have questions on, you don't understand? I always say there's never a bad question for all questions. I just had one small, um, I can't remember what page it was on. It, it had to do with um, revenue and, and the levy revenue. And it said something about the levy um, was to also pay back um, pay for Main Street. But I think that Main Street, the portion of the loan um, that paid for Main Street. Is actually being paid back by REIT dollars, not from levy proceeds. So I don't know if that, I can maybe send an email later. But um, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that REIT, our REIT revenue is being used to pay back. Um, that loan for Main Street until, I believe, two thousand thirty one. So when we look at our revenues, we just have to remember that. It's already spoken for a lot of fortune each year. Larissa, did you, did you give that one?
Yeah, and we do account for that in our, in our, um, in the body documents. We definitely did why also, we had a discussion about um, the REIT one and two allocation policy. That way we won't run into, I mean, because it can be split up however council wants. You know, um, reserve fifteen to twenty percent of it for, you know, debt. And then twenty five goes to parks, fifteen goes to that. There, there's certain ways that you have to spend it, but um, being able to allocate a percentage, so that way it's just really easy for us to have. Um, and it's, you know, clear moving forward. That's why we kind of bring the policy. So.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that policy because we wouldn't want to get ourselves into a situation where. We um, take all of our REIT into the future and apply it to pay down.
Yes, that is our REIT money being tied up. Yes, absolutely.
Uh, yes.
So. But it's still a pretty strict format. It's period of money, period which spent, period we didn't, or what we're, here's a schedule. And if I think like levels of service, um, are we tracking that we're meeting? And as we develop those, for example, with the level of service from police officers, and we say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with our. Our numbers based on crime per gap, right? Might be a good news for us because it's not per number of people or location that we had. So we need to have this. Then how do we track that we are meeting that level of service that we've laid out ourselves?
Uh, directors are required to track the level of service in general. So that, let's say it was police, that would be the police chief going, okay, we're down. And, you know, we're down in officer potentially because we chose this level of service. I think it would be hard sometimes to pick just crime because crime can go up and down as well. And so I think it's a combination of things that you would look at, but it is our jobs as directors. To look at our level of service and are we maintaining it? And when we are off, either above or below, and above doesn't usually happen, but below. Then we have to go to administration and then we come to council. And the time that we come to council should be during the biennial process. Not in between it, but every two years. And then looking at that six year also and tracking that. So our job is to track it every month, every quarter, every year and throughout the six year period.
And as you learn our benefits, we roll that into the CFP.
Okay, see that last part?
And you learn our exits and targets, the level of service that aren't working for our community. You have the record, you don't feed that back into modifying the living document.
Uh, Larissa can answer that and I think I'm going to follow up.
Yeah, I would say that for a few things, um, there are adopted levels of service that we can't just change. Um, we establish the fact that we provide a level of service within this document. And then if we find that there is something that needs to be, that we're not meeting that level of service, like we're under. But if we were under a level of service, that's when we would bring during this review biennial. Or the one year check-in that we do, you know, this really, this is going to be, this is a new way for us to do it. We haven't historically done our capital facilities plan this way. And um, I think sometimes that led to things getting away from us a little bit in, in planning. Sometimes for the big, the big capital projects and things like that. But being able to have something like this, that looks, even though we're doing a biennial budget, that looks out a couple more years' time. That we can move things around in order for a system to make that and for other products to go with that. But yeah, I mean, the, the level of service is, it's usually adaptable, transportation, that happened. We can't just say, oh, we can change it because you don't have to go to transportation bank. That we're, you know, we established some of these levels of service in other documents. And just like um, all of these six year plans come from our twenty year project lists that involve those, those bigger documents. So.
Stacking is more adaptable, some capital projects aren't as adaptable. But a lot of our capital projects are also based on growth. And so if you're slow, your plan's going to go slower. If it's at a faster clip, then you should be in case with the population growth of either business or people. It's a, it's, it's, that's why we constantly have to look at it. One thing that's been hard, I think for like planning and public works is. You know, it's just trying to stay pace as well, but finding and doing all of, you know, the CIP work, it takes funding. And there's a lot of projects out there and that's why you need to prioritize them as well. Because I think everybody would like a park in the neighborhood, right? I always use that one because that's the easiest one.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard question. I know, that's why I was going, like, you said, we provide a lot of service over, you know, for. So when you, when we start experiencing a secure plan, using a level of service, it's very hard to manage. Again, schedule on dollars is easy, but if we don't have a metric, it's only like, how are we meeting our goal of one service? We also know it's putting in my brain.
Yes.
So you know, the goal will drive a lot. And so we can identify, we provide two levels of service in there because we're not sure. Or too many parks sound good, one that was maybe sitting here. But our residents don't necessarily need, need that part. So you can't over.
Yeah.
And, and getting metrics to track them and have to, and that's a dollar.
And that's really why I think GMA requires this six year plan.
Yeah.
Right? And, and the way that the magnitude of jurisdictions that I look at, it, it's on their, their budget process cycle. That's just how it is. It, it's on their, their budget process cycle. That's just how it is. And that way we can establish, you may need more activities, do you need less? More police, less police, you know, we need a new city hall, not, and those types of things. So.
Well, and even if you need like say a new facility, like a city hall, maybe there's something else. That is so deficient that you have to bring it to the forefront. And that can be really my conversation internally, externally, but those things. Do happen and you have to be adaptable to those. Are there any more questions? Yes, I'm not quite sure how to ask this. Okay, I'm a little shy. Um. Does the comprehensive plan take into account not just people, but, um, the different ages and stages of people? Like, say, women who are twenty five, twenty six years ago, it seemed to be a lot of families with young kids. And some retirees and, you know, it was, it was quite a different makeup. And it seems like a little less, you know, ten years. Families aren't as big as they were. There's fewer families moving in. Does the, um. The river views. CIP address that and like, how the enrollment in schools going up or down, their projections for the next twenty years? How is, how is that gonna affect us as a city?
Yes, absolutely. They do. Their, so their boundary is a lot bigger than, um, you know, the city limits. But it, they do, they are required as well to do their six year capital facility plan. And I think they just pass there.
Just approved theirs a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and they historically have had a high, um, capital charge. And I think because they've noticed that enrollment has gone down, that they need to adjust those things. So some of the plans that they have for the schools. Um, on Big Rock Road and something like that may not be happening as quickly as they thought they were going to, but that means that they need to recognize. Their budget as well, right? Because they can't just take these impact fees, um, and not use them appropriately. So they do the same thing that we have to do. They just do it on, on their boundary, which is a lot better than ours. How that affects us? I'm not really sure.
Well, and I think even going in, kind of beyond that too, is we look at socioeconomics as well. And we look at population data by age. And so we are, like, that data will be in our plan and that's things that we have to adapt to as well. Is maybe you're not gonna have as many top law type things and maybe you're gonna have, you know, some more walking paths. And maybe you're gonna have a trail for bikes and other types of services. But you have to remember that we will ebb and flow out of younger and older as well. Um, there are a lot of socioeconomic conditions that, um, also impact us as well. There's, as, as you become more affluent, the trend is that your, your spending size does go down. And so we, you know, we are starting to see that because we are a fairly, um. High median income within the community. So you'll start to see some changes. Like we, we were all a little surprised when we saw the twenty twenty data. And we're already what, four years into the next drive, and we've seen a ton of changes just even in the four years. And so I think when you see your twenty thirty information, you're gonna see a very different community. By demographics, by age, by ethnicity.
Any more questions?
Thank you for the first touch. Appreciate it.
Uh, presentation of, uh, economic development, uh, by Jennifer Cannon and Mackenzie. Pleasure for you guys.
Um, are you guys gonna be sharing the slides or do you want us to? Okay, sorry, can't hear you. I will share. Um, the sharing is not turned on.
Okay, I'll try it again.
Yep, now it's working. Awesome. All right, can you guys see the slides? Okay? Great. Um, my name is Jennifer Cannon. I'm a senior project manager at Echo Northwest. And, um, we are working on the comprehensive plan update as a part of a larger interdisciplinary team. With AHBL leading the effort. Um, we are a firm that's located in the Pacific Northwest. We have an office in Seattle and Mackenzie and I are in the Seattle office. We have a couple of offices in Portland and California. We have about seventy five people. And our business mostly focuses on economic analysis and urban planning projects. We, um, help a lot with housing planning and policy development and development feasibility analysis. We, um, also help with long range planning and looking at equity concerns. We have a new practice area that helps us look at how we can be more equitable and promote equity in decision making. Um, but we do a variety of projects all throughout the Pacific Northwest mostly. And Mackenzie, uh, here is also a, an associate at Echo Northwest. And she helps out with a lot of development feasibility, economic development work and housing, um, policy type work. So we are helping with, uh, updating two chapters in the comprehensive plan, the economic development. Chapter and, uh, the housing chapter, but we will probably just be focusing on our discussion on economic development today, today. Um, we'll provide an overview of the economic development element, the chapter, just give you an overview of what it's for. And, uh, what it focuses on. And then we'll describe a little bit about what we've heard from public engagement. And we'll provide some of the highlights of our economic analysis. We did an economic conditions. An opportunities analysis that basically looks at the, the current conditions and trends we are seeing. In, in the city and in the region and what we might expect to see in the future. And, uh, we also have an, uh, analysis of the economic opportunities and challenges. This is something, this is an exercise we do. Uh, for communities, because it's really helpful to revisit what kind of opportunities might be emerging. Uh, because we are looking at opportunities over the next twenty years. So we want to capture those opportunities and also understand the challenges. Associated with opportunities. And then we'll give you an overview of our economic goals and, um, policies that we are focusing on. Um, as you guys probably know, like, you know, all about the comprehensive plan, you've probably been having a lot of presentations on this plan. But we are, um, updating the plant to look at the next twenty years. Uh, the planning horizon is twenty twenty four to twenty forty four. And, um, the economic development chapter is one of eight chapters. So it's, it's one of the topics that you focus on. Um, and I love this little box right here that describes the purpose of the comprehensive plan. It's really a roadmap. For how you want to see the city develop and grow over the next twenty years. And it touches on a lot of challenging planning topics related to capital facilities you were talking about. Also housing, transportation, environmental sustainability and community amenities and parks. And it's a living document. It's one that is, is expected to be updated. You need to recalibrate your vision and see. What you would like to see happen in the next twenty years every so often. So for the economic development element, it's, you know, similar to what I just described. It's a roadmap for economic vitality for the city. It's, it's a chance to look at opportunities for how we can help. Um, the city become more fiscally sustainable, how, um, the land and the infrastructure can support businesses. And employment, and it can look at how to balance and diversify industrial, commercial and residential activities. All, all kinds of developments. It can also help look at ways to support new businesses and existing businesses. And, um, support the revitalization and sustainability of certain commercial core areas such as the Old Town area. There has been some public engagement that has occurred over the, especially over this last spring. Uh, there's been some steering committee meetings, open house and, uh, survey effort. And so we've been collecting. Feedback from people because it's really important for us to really hear from the community and understand what's important and what could be prioritized. As a part of, of this update. We hear, we've heard a lot of support for small businesses. And then concern about bigger businesses kind of pushing out smaller businesses. And putting pressure, um, on those, the, the vitality of those businesses. Um, there is a preference for more local businesses rather than big box and large development. There's strong support for the Old Town improvements. There's been a variety of improvements, the Old Town area. To make it more of a, um, pedestrian friendly area. And, um, the, in terms of values, the small town feel. The safety, the community and people and local economy businesses are highly valued. And there was some discussion on rightsizing tourism, because there are some, um, goals and policies related to tourism. And there's been a discussion like, how much tourism do you want? And what, what makes sense for Duval? Uh, you know, you can get. To be a real big tourist attraction. So it's important to kind of, uh, think about what, what you want to see in terms of tourism. Um, uh, economic activity. There was a great survey that was put out and they asked some questions about, uh, businesses and what, what's missing from Duval. There's a certain, you know, there's only a certain amount that the city can do to help with that, but it, it is important to kind of see what, what's missing. And how this, more services could be added to the city. Uh, there, there was a question about how much people shop, uh, in Old Town locally. Uh, weekly, you know, monthly, and, and most of the people, uh, shop weekly, uh, but people often shop outside of, uh. Old Town and, and Duval, um, sixty five percent. So they shop mostly weekly out, outside of Duval, which is interesting. Um, people are able to buy essentials like groceries, meals, prescriptions, gas and hardware, but have to travel to Redmond or some of the other larger cities. For, um, healthcare or recreation and entertainment. And some of the new businesses that are desired in Duval are restaurants and dining options. Youth oriented recreation and entertainment, um, and grocery stores. A lot of the answers really focused on food. So I'm, I'm wondering if people were very hungry when they were filling out the survey, but, um. That's just something I had to point out because I, when I was reading that. But it's important for us to kind of look at, uh, what might be missing from the fabric and what can be done in terms of economic goals and policies. Uh, there's been a lot of progress since twenty fifteen when the, the previous, uh, conference, uh, when they had the update for the comp plan. There is, uh, thriving farmer's market. It was moved to a more prominent location. There's a lot of community events and new community events that have been added. There's been an effort to revitalize the Old Town area by providing infrastructure improvements, public art benches. And a new transportation benefit district. There's been cool, uh, public art, like I mentioned, and business facade improvements along the Old Town area. And there, um, anecdotally, we've heard that there seems to be, uh, low commercial vacancy. There's not a lot of empty storefronts. In, um, the, the town center and that's something, um, that, um. Kind of might indicate that there might be a need for more retail spaces in, in the city. All right, and I'll hand this off to Mackenzie to provide an overview of our findings from our economic analysis.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Jennifer mentioned, we put together an economic profile of the city. Prior to working on the policies. And so part of that was updating some of the findings from the twenty fifteen economic analysis. And some of that was doing some new analysis. And so these are just some of the key findings that we've included in that profile. First, there are over five residents for every job in Duval. So there's a lot of residents that commute out and a lot of workers that commute in. For Duval residents, the average commute time is thirty two minutes. And almost a third of the working population in Duval currently works remote, which is a big shift. Duval has a pretty solid share of workforce aged adults. That's adults between the ages of eighteen and sixty four years old. That's remained pretty steady at just under two thirds of the population over the last ten years. Uh, that's actually pretty significant because in a lot of other cities, you do see that number shrinking as the population gets older, but it's remained pretty steady in Duval. Uh, one other thing to note is that the median household income in Duval is relatively high. It's a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars per year as of twenty twenty two, and that is a fifty one percent increase from ten years ago. Go on to the next slide, Jen. Thank you. And so we looked at trends in employment as well. So overall, from twenty twelve to twenty twenty one, there was pretty slow and steady job growth. There was kind of a bit of a bump up in, from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. We don't necessarily have the data to see what trend, if that trend will continue or know exactly why that happens. But we think that might be because as remote work became more common and more obvious that it's kind of here to stay. A lot of workers that might have previously lived closer to their jobs in Redmond or Bellevue or Seattle. Decided to move a little bit further out and take advantage of all the amenities in Duval. Looking at employment by sector in the industry. So over half of Duval residents work in the services sector. That is a pretty broad sector. It includes healthcare, education, accommodation, food services, and then sort of your scientific and technical services. But that is by far Duval's biggest industry, followed by education at around fourteen percent and construction and resources at eight percent. Although construction and resources was the largest, had the highest growth of any industry over the last decade. And so we also looked at sales tax revenue trends. So we don't have the time period listed here, but Duval's sales tax has increased even throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that is not the case for every city. In a lot of cases, we saw sales tax revenue decrease. Uh, but one thing to note is that Duval does have a lower sales tax revenue per resident compared to some other nearby cities. And what that might suggest to us is that Duval residents are doing a portion of their shopping in other cities. And also that there might be some opportunity for retail growth in the city. Okay, and finally, just some notes on the real estate market in Duval. So I'll walk through these charts. So starting with the one on the left, this is a chart that shows retail rents and vacancy rates. And so the blue line there is the rent rate. Uh, as you can see, it increased quite a bit from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, um, and then decreased a bit, which is expected throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. But one thing that is really notable is the vacancy rate is very low and has stayed very low over the past five or six years. It's less than one percent, which is very notable. Uh, there is not a lot of vacant retail space in Duval. And so for the chart on the right, this is a chart that would be for both deliveries and net absorption. But there weren't any deliveries over the time period. So we'll focus on net absorption. What that is, is the amount of space that was either leased up, which would be positive net absorption or became vacant, which would be negative. And so while there was mildly negative net absorption from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. And then mildly positive net absorption, uh, in the years following. Because the magnitude of that net absorption is relatively low, so we're looking at around a thousand square feet of space either becoming leased up. Or a lease ends and it becomes vacant. Because that magnitude is pretty low, what that says to us is that. Space in Duval is staying pretty consistent. So because of that low vacancy rate, it's unlikely that businesses from outside Duval are moving in. And it's also unlikely that businesses in Duval are giving up their leases. They're kind of staying put. So with that, I will hand it back to Jennifer to talk about what all of this means for Duval.
Great. Uh, one other, uh, data analysis that we have been, um, doing is related to the business license data. Um, businesses in Duval are required to get a business license and the, the specific requirements are, um, outlined in the code. Um, but we, we, uh, have found from just preliminary analysis of, of this data that there seems to be growth in businesses. We're gonna dig, dig deeper into it, but the growth is mostly with small businesses. Uh, it has been increasing. Um, especially over, since, since like twenty sixteen. And most of the businesses are, have less than ten employees. So very small businesses. Uh, and then most of the businesses are, are not home based, which that's something we look at. Cause there are, you know, people who have side businesses with their normal job and there's other, you know, kind of like smaller types of, um, businesses. Uh, and it, it does seem like a significant, significant portion are not the home operated businesses. So there's, uh. Quite a bit of business growth, but we are looking further into the data. We're gonna look at what kind of, uh. Sectors, like what kind of industrial sectors, uh, that, that, uh, the businesses are in and where we're seeing growth. It could be, you know, growth and more like, uh, boutique type retail stores or, um, you know, different types, food related businesses. We're gonna look into that just to get more insights on, on where you're seeing some growth. So there might be some opportunity to help, uh, build on those synergies. And then one of the exercises that we really, uh, like to do, this is kind of a truncated version. I'm sorry, I have so much text. But, uh, it's really important to look at the strengths, opportunities, uh, weaknesses and threats and. And and uh, to to really kind of see where there might be some opportunities to to um, help address. Um, so one of the, so what what we found was that, you know, Duval is just a great attractive community. It's been growing quite significantly. Uh, and there's a lot of great community events. There's strong local serving retail development. And there are opportunities for commercial residential uses to co-locate on in mixed use areas. Uh, there's a active amount of partners that are helping Duval and and the economic development and including the Chamber, the Cultural Commission. Uh, and some of the challenges are that Duval is isolated, but some people might think of that as actually an attractiveness to the city. So that's kind of a double edged sword. Um, but other challenges are a shortage of high paying professional jobs and shortage of affordable housing. Especially for people working in Duval because there is quite a few people that are commuting to uh, work in the city. So that's one of the challenges. There is um, a lack of some of the needed commercial establishments such as healthcare uh, facilities. And um, limited tourist kind of uh, lodging facilities. Uh, and there's a lack of vacant res- uh, industrial land. That's something that uh, the city has recognized. And uh, might need to address in terms of zoning changes. Um, and then another challenge is to maintain that local atmosphere, the unique quality of of Duval. And um, still help the city become economically vibrant or or maintain the economic vibrancy that it has. And continue to be fiscally sustainable. And so our question to to the group is, are, is there anything missing from this list that you would love to recognize? I don't know if we have time for discussion now. Um, we can, um, we have like a couple more slides. We can uh, return to this discussion if that makes sense. But um, that's a, that's a big question for us. We want to make sure that we're capturing the local knowledge and incorporating that into our work as much as possible.
Um, I was just gonna say, I I think it's sort of captured, but maybe not totally spelled out here. I mean, there are a lot of home-based businesses in Duval, um. And not a lot of vacant or open opportunities for commercial space. But also to get yourself financially to the point that you can afford one of those spaces is a whole other matter. Um, and so what I didn't see was the word like incubation in here. And so like um, business incubation, I know, I feel like Carnation's looking into this or somebody close by this in Palm Valley. That they're looking in business incubator models, having smaller spaces. A lot of the spaces that do pop open and some of these old buildings are quite large, therefore they're very expensive. And so is there anything we can do or look at to encourage smaller, more affordable spaces? Not everyone needs a lot of square footage. Um, is there anything we can do to help grow those? Because like that would create more local businesses. They do exist. A lot of them, it's a side gig until they reach that. It it's a hard financial line to, that that you're just chasing, to get to the point where it makes sense to get a brick and mortar. Um, and needing a little middle step before you get to that point.
Yeah, I sort of had had two points or or question. I think one was, you know, there's a lot of um. Passion in the community that's reflected in the small town feel. People like to come out, high level engagement. I do notice and it reflects a little bit what Amy said, you know, there's the the startup and then it's remaining that engagement. It's getting flywheel going. You know, people turn out, they're very excited. There's certain restaurants that are frequented. Um, and sort of how to maintain that momentum. So there's both sort of a strength in terms of the population component. And then uh, the challenge around whether it is incubation feeder grants, other things to remain communication. And and the the city's partner and helped with a lot of that with the events coordinator. But but also, you know, how you do that with Chamber and and coordinate those activities. The other, I was just kind of curious how you view, I I remember seeing some the data from um. Sort of the broader district as on a per capita basis, Duval has some of like the highest percentage of youth of any city of its size. And that's also come out, you know, I think in a lot of the surveys and feedback, a lot of facilities. But I also didn't know from an economic development, you're finding those right businesses or venues that you could frequent. There's a feeder for, you know, we have a lot of challenges around transportation, bringing in workers to work businesses. But we have a pool of sort of eager youth and we see it different, different levels of. Um, well, the hardware store is a great example, employs a lot of youth. They give back to the community. There's sort of a, again, a symbiotic relationship. And and sort of that came up in any of your research, both in terms of from a demographic perspective. But also if there's opportunities there from an economic development perspective around sort of that youth population as well.
And I had um, something to add to Amy's point. Um. I own one of the small businesses, I own Valley Mail, and I have a lot of customers come in. Who are massage uh, massage therapists, um. People who are um, counselors and they're looking for office space. They don't need a lot of space. They need like four hundred, five hundred square feet max. And you can't find it. There's so few of it. That is, that is what I think the biggest need is, really small office space for counselors, masseuses. Um, people who just wanna like do a C P A, yeah. Um, people who just wanna like have an office outside of the house. Um, we just don't have that. And yes, um, a supportive community for all of our nation is working valleywide. They're holding meetings online and um, at the libraries to get um. Feedback for a business incubator, which is probably five to ten years down the line. But they're trying to get input from as many people in the community as they can right now. So that might be something for you to look at. I was just gonna.
Oh, yeah. Well, in your presentation, I didn't see anything about Highway two oh three, which brings a lot of traffic into Duval. But I'm not sure how much of it really stays within Duval. It goes through. Is that something that would be a, a strength and an opportunity or and or a challenge?
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's an opportunity for sure to have more people able to access the city and the businesses. Um, it'd probably be more of an opportunity versus a challenge unless like the highway was. Where a lot of the businesses were located and people didn't want to walk and visit the businesses. And so it decreased their population of their their market. Um, so yeah, I definitely think that would be a um, opportunity.
I just wanted to add as well, you know, from a planning, the link department perspective is that. A lot of our businesses in Old Town, their older buildings are old and cranky buildings. So when somebody does want to come in to go in there, a lot of times they're working at substantial changes and costs. And that's very prohibitive to a small business that's going from like say a home business to a brick and mortar. And then to add on to that. To build a new building, construction is very high. The cost of land is very high. And I think looking at that like incubator and flex tech space. Where, you know, you have a bone that comes in and it's a shell and somebody comes in and puts in maybe in the first like sweep. You'll say it's twenty-five hundred square feet and there's a couple of a hundred square foot, a couple of five hundred and those types. And so trying to figure out how to incentivize, incentivize those, find goals, find cooperatives. I don't know, like looking outside the box. Because if you do go into some downtown. Um, communities, including ours, or even in midtown, you'll find a larger building that is kind of like topped up. And they had a kind of little office spaces and then it doesn't necessarily work for somebody that's like. Cooking and preparing and providing widgets and products, some things it does. It seems to be more office related because you have to have a whole nother setup if you're doing uh, something more intensive use. But we have so many wants and so many calls that come in, you know, every month, every year here. And we don't have anywhere to flip anybody. Yeah, keep going. And you know, we have people that want to go with the building. And then kind of reality comes crashing down that they need, you know, five, eight or ten million dollars to do a project. You know, and that, that then can, unless they have a tenant in there. And for tenants to afford that rate, they're not small town tenants. They're, they're larger tenants. They're Starbucks's, they're Subway's. And so trying to figure out in this next twenty-year period. How do we bring in the small and the boutique and the incubator spaces?
Yeah, I just uh, touching on what you were saying. Um, we had asked a question or I had asked a question. A couple of weeks ago about some of the commercial developments where we are, where were we with them? Um, there's a lot of projects that they had. Pre-application meetings. I think they've even done some farm breweries, the main street development, got quite a ways through. And it it seems like they're stalling potentially. And I I, I I consider that a challenge. How do you describe that? Cost to build, the cost uh, I I think that. It's frustrating because I mean, I'm I'm so excited about the farm brewery. I I really think it could add so much to our town. And kind of um, lengthen Main Street, the walkable portion of the things to do and to lose something like that. Um, I really think we need to figure out how to describe that challenge and how to fix that. Because um, yeah, otherwise we're gonna get, you know, all the stores that have the capital. Um, to commit to a big building project and that's not what our residents want. And honestly, I think it would damage what's special about our town. Um, so it would just be just in every town. You can go to any other town, go to any stores. We need to have things that you can't get anywhere else that you're really willing to do balls, spend the day. And I want it to be a place that I enjoy being, that I enjoy going down and walking on Main Street and it's um. So I like that comment about uh, how much tourism do we want? I don't want too much tourism that I feel displaced in my own town because there's too many people. Um, so like a balance of that. But anyway, I really do want to try to sort out how to describe that challenge. Um, that we're seeing some of the commercial development. Um, and maybe uh, how to communicate that we do need these smaller little units. And who can build that? That's a huge challenge.
I would also add on to that where we have a significant amount of commercial land. We have a residential home builder that owns it, where where they're either not sophisticated or don't have incentive. That's a challenge. But what else do we have down there? Restrictive deed for uses. And I'm not sure if we've talked about that. You know, Jennifer and Mackenzie, but a large area of actually all of our commercial area. Um, that's mixed use on Big Rock Road is deed restricted because that's what Safeway did. And that doesn't, I'm not, I can't remember what it's set to expire me to pull it, but that has been very prohibitive. And even Toll Brothers, who owns that land, has said that to us as well. So Safeway, sorry, I won't go too far into it, but Safeway, when they bought that property. It was a large piece and so it goes up to Big Rock Road. And even across the street from Toll Brothers where their building has deed restrictions. Deed restrictions. So it's basically no compete clauses on all of those parcels. Um, so that's definitely a challenge. Plus, having a strategy to go to Toll Brothers and say, let us help you, right? And seeing if we can make that work. Because a lot of times we'll get calls in, like we'd like to do this. But quite honestly, the owner is not responding or is not re- reset the, that they're allowed uses. Yeah.
Has anybody heard of the pop shops on Main and Buckle? Is there anything that prevents us from doing something a little bit more creative and flexible like that? Like when there's a couple empty lots just right here on Main Street. That'd always be like preventative, maybe build in or the whoever owns it doesn't want to build there, but they put some things temporary in there. Is there anything that prevents that? No? Okay. Maybe something like that, ideas, it was stuck that to keep looking into.
Part of, so part of starting with buildings to do uh. Try a few uh, maybe lease for bi- of uh, space. You will, it's a part of their, what I refer to as a challenge with this, that's aside of it, but the building is so old. That they are straddled with costs that we understandably will leverage the city to bring it up to church. So they can use that building. Uh, I've heard that on this one, or say, hey, I want to do this. And like, but I want the city, they want to do something, but they have this as well. You're doing good if you do this, 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 this. Which I've been a thank mission, so you can't, we could all sound like great ideas, but uh, that's a challenge for some of the businesses. I think that if you look, come in and find a space, they all would say, oh, I don't want to break that building, uh, to go. So I don't know there's a way we can, I don't know how to solve, but I think it's a challenge as well. And maybe we aren't seeing a definite articulated here.
We absolutely know it's a challenge and we've talked about it on many occasions. Our challenge is, is that, is that we follow state statute for building codes and adopt those building codes. And therefore health, life and safety.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be a challenge, I'm saying if the farmer.
They are.
How do we help these businesses when they're gonna install challenges? If they, because they're coming out of cost of bills, big trouble then, the cost of upgrading is also gonna be. So, you know, if we want these smaller businesses to come in, that's my, I'm absolutely worried, including the sand as well. Not saying it's, saying there's gotta be a way for us on our, how do we help them, but there's a city, but you know, there's a city point, somebody's. I'm not saying we do, I'm saying that that's a challenge that they're gonna, I don't want with that kind of like, because we're trying to invest. Anyone who's able to do some type of policy analysis and be like, okay, my rent's good, but by the time I invest two hundred thousand dollars in it. Um, when am I, when's my return on my business? It's not gonna be here. And they're like, okay, I'll go somewhere else.
Yeah, I know, like even for us, like we struggle for many, for our city projects and so we're constantly looking for state grants. And right now, there's a ton of energy grants out there for businesses to update windows and HVAC systems and all those things. So I think that's those partnerships with the Chamber and Rotary. And then also us potentially have like a grant facade. Um, and sign, a sign facade, like grant programs or low interest rate loans. I'm not sure what we, you know, what everything that we can do or even what money we have or resources to allocate to it. But we have not, since the recession, staffed economic development in in general. And I think that's something that's gonna come out of this exercise is, is it time to invest in economic development? In in a strategy and in most importantly, the implementation of that strategy. And I don't know if it's the right kind, but I think we have to at least talk about it because it's been since two thousand nine. And we're stretched really tight as staff members. And we're, we're not necessarily resident experts in economic development. This is all kind of try to do as much as we can. And that's honestly a challenge. And we've talked about that as like what we're looking at in those goals, you know, and policies moving forward.
So maybe you can add our, our city, that our case and system is that, uh, we don't have, we we, we're gonna license these deeds and all this such thing. Maybe that's what we look for, like I said, maybe it's a challenge or a chat is that, like, expertise.
I think it also ties into, you know, there are a lot of community development funds and investment funds. They're typically targeted in their cities or little income areas. And I think that's the other challenge that you've called out a lot and was raised here. Is, you know, we're not really a low rural community anymore. We have a high median income. Uh, there might be some ways to encourage startup businesses or or bring in, you know, create opportunities to to build a business. For for folks that don't have that opportunity to sort of pair two things with with one another. But I just wanted to call that out. I was saying, there's a lot of resource out there. They're just not tailored in a city where the median income is a hundred and seventy thousand.
And you, you can also. Do things with tax pay dollars, which are improvements. You can do prevent sidewalks, you can put sewer and water, you know, stub them out. Uh, you can do sub area plans where you kind of help plan things, where you help plan things out. Some, some cities, I'm not suggesting you do so, no, no shock value here. But some cities buy properties and build buildings and then create those incubator spaces. I mean, those are opportunities that you have as well. It's more unusual and there's a lot of risk when you go in and you buy a property and you develop it. But it it is done, or sometimes you buy the property. But it it is done, or sometimes you buy the property, then create the plan and then sell it off in chunks according to that plan. Um, but those those are challenging. I think you find, you know, McCree Town Center is, you know, one of those examples where the city did a ton of work and it took twenty five years for that vision to come to fruition. Monroe bought a bunch of property in Kelsey area and has one building on it. And they have the debt paid off, but they haven't been able to sell it because a former council allowed loads to put deed restrictions on it. So like it just takes, it takes a lot to move that train and you have to be really careful what you do when you're using those, you know, tax tariffs.
Well, that all this was really helpful. I'll go through our last few slides. Um, we took lots of notes, this is super helpful feedback and and insights. Um, we just have a brief overview of the existing goals that are in the economic development element. It it's good to kind of look at these, these are very high level, there are seven goals and lots of policies associated with them. But we are working on updating uh the policies and have a lot of uh suggestions and a lot of questions about what's relevant anymore and what maybe uh would be a better uh addition to help with uh some of the concerns we're hearing about. Um, so that's something that we'll be continually asking for feedback on and uh we will have, you know, draft changes available for people to look at and add their two cents to. Uh, and some of the areas that we have identified are, um, they were just uh mentioned just earlier, which is great. Um, you know, we've heard about a need for uh updating the sub area plan for the downtown area. It was adopted in two thousand and four, which is twenty years ago. So it's a great time to look at that sub area plan and look at the more of these detailed projects. Like you're talking about public private partnerships and development opportunities and infrastructure needs to help support these smaller businesses you guys are, you know, mentioning. So it's a great time to look at those issues. And there was this suggestion to add um a couple more uh sub area plans. One um possibly for the bid town to Big Rock Road and another one for Big Rock Road to two seventy eighth. A lot of times, a a big discussion for those sub area plans are the boundary of of what will be included in that sub area plan. And there in the uh downtown sub area plan boundary could be revisited and and uh kind of recalibrated to fit what you want to focus on. Uh, there are some new state tax increment financing opportunities that a lot of cities are uh looking into. Our company does a lot of work with that, it's a, it's an emerging area. Um, but you have to be careful with, you know, doing that kind of uh using that kind of tool uh, cause you are, you know, using future property tax incentives. And so it requires a lot of analysis and looking at different options of what makes sense. And then as mentioned, there was a a need for an economic development focused staff member to help with supporting the implementation of uh this economic development element, possibly another strategic economic development plan. A lot of cities pull those together and they could be, you know, very high level or they can be more detailed, but they can actually have some actions that can be converted to a work plan and you can see some more things happen on the ground. Uh, a lot of times those strategies involve a lot of partners, because there's only so much the city can do. You know, Chambers can do a lot more related to helping with businesses. And so uh it it is helpful to look at those partnership opportunities as part of that effort. The rise in remote work ha- has some opportunities with it. People are needing more third places, I always like to bring this up, because I'm seeing it. Um, people want places where it's a community hub, when you're working remotely, you want to meet with other people. And so you might want to go to coffee shops more often, restaurants, uh recreational facilities. And then the coworking spaces is also a a consideration uh for the city. And then there's just a need to look at the recruitment and retention of businesses as as we've been mentioning. And so our next steps is to look at those goals and policies and add in actual track changes and revisions and and proposals and get some insights from city staff and then from the planning commission and whoever else wants to, should be involved with this review process. Uh, so that's where we're at, where we are in the process of uh, you know, really providing these draft suggestions and working on getting them refined and really reflective of what the city would like to see happen for the next twenty years. Um, and that will also include our, the housing element work, which housing, the housing uh issues and planning are very much related to economic development. So it's something important for uh the city to look at. And that's our presentation. Uh, I would love to, if anybody has any more questions or points they want to bring up, we really wanted to hear from you. And we we uh are in the process of adding updates and we want to really hear about opportunities for these updates. So if you have any other comments or questions, please let us know.
Yeah, I am curious if anywhere in what you've looked at, um, have you considered the Creative District? It's, I don't know if you know what that is, I'm assuming you do. Um, a lot of different cities are designated Creative District. And I I'm just curious if that's something you see as being a viable strategy? Um, and then also, um, aside from Chambers, some cities have, you know, potentially a downtown association, um, different things like that, if that would be another mechanism to build up um kind of that um business collaboration.
Yeah, there is, um, so for the last part, there is a an existing policy that uh calls for a a downtown business association to be formed and uh so that's already in place, but we we might look at like, okay, how can you really make this happen? Because, you know, not much has happened uh related to that as far as we know, so that's a good um comment. So uh that's in there, but we need to probably look at updating that. Uh, the Creative District is a great idea. I I um know that, you know, might help open up opportunities to state grants related to like arts and theater and um those kinds of opportunities. And uh tho- those are definitely great types of community amenities that helps the community thrive. So that's definitely a good one to add. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys. And um definitely feel free to let us know if you have any other ideas that come up and we'll be working on updating this, these chapters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, uh, new business. Okay, I was just looking for something, all right. Do we have anything for a bit of the order? That. During the uh our joint meeting today, uh seven eleven P M.
Thank you, hopefully you enjoy it as you.